I'll now go to order the City County Council meeting for Monday, February 25th, 2019. We'll begin our meeting with a prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Counselor Lewis.
Good evening. I have invited a dear friend to all of us, or most of us, to lead us in prayer and the pledge, Pastor Covington from Friendship Baptist Church on the West Side. Pastor?
Shall we bow our heads? God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, Thou who has brought us thus far on our way. Lord, we come tonight to tell you thank you. We thank you for the blessing of your grace and your mercy. Lord, we thank you for our president and all of the members of the City County Council. And we pray, God, that Thou will continue to give them wisdom even as they make decisions that will affect all of our great city. Lord, we thank you because we know tonight that you know more than we know, and you can do more than we can do. So, Lord, we ask that they will continually to look to you for direction, that all of us will have that spirit of unity, cohesiveness, and cooperation. Lord, we thank you tonight for the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority and all those lovely ladies that are present here tonight. And, God, we thank you tonight for every participant in this meeting. And we just ask that you would bless all that are here, and all that is said, and all that is done, that you will be glorified, and that your name will be lifted high. We ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
And pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselors, please select your green button to indicate your attendance. Counselors, please select your green button to indicate your attendance. We have twenty-three, twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-two members present. Counselors Cordy, Scales, and Wessler have asked to be excused for the evening. The next item on our agenda is introduction of guests and visitors. And, Counselors, if you don't mind, I'd like to take a point of personal privilege. I have my mother in the audience, and it's a special treat for me. She's a member, a diamond member of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. And if you all could just give her a welcome from the council. At ninety-four, she's a pretty extraordinary lady, if you don't mind. And in addition, I have my two sisters here, too, who are also members of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. Counselors. Counselor McCollum?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not going to offer up anyone's ages, but I have two people in attendance tonight who I'd like to recognize. First, Mr. Rick Anderson from Pike Township, very involved in Pike Township issues and community issues. Mr. Anderson, thank you for being here tonight. And secondly, Mr. Tony Mendez. Mr. Mendez is a former Warren Township School Board member, very involved with the Warren Little League and other community-based organizations in Warren Township. Thank you for being here, Mr. Mendez.
Counsel Oliver?
Chairman, a special recognition for the Reggie Jones family, please. Please stand. Thank you very much for coming.
Counsel McHenry?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize Ed Locke, who is a neighborhood leader on the west side in Pike Township, and also a very wonderful volunteer for many organizations in our community. And I know those organizations really appreciate all the hard work and dedication he does for them.
Counsel Adamson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome all the neighborhoods who are here to support the amended proposal number seven, the signed ordinance. So if you could stand up and show your support there.
Counsel Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize two extraordinary school leaders that are in the house with us tonight, Tommy Reddicks of Paramount School of Excellence and Scott Best of Purdue Polytechnic High School.
Counsel Feaster?
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the opportunity to see your mother once again. She is an amazing lady. But I also wanted to recognize a friend I just saw walk in, Susan Blair, who is the president of the Pike Township Residents Association and does wonderful work. Thank you, Susan.
Counsel Maury?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to welcome the first responders. I know I see a lot of the firefighters in the back there, and any of the first responders that are here this evening with us.
Counsel Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to acknowledge my beautiful Link sisters, and so they know who they are. If they would please stand up and let us celebrate you
Very good. Counsel Fanning?
Thank you, Mr. President. I see Nora Community Council President Ruth Hayes in the audience. She has been gone for a long time, and she's recovered now enough to finally make it to the CCB. I know she's been raring to go. Thank you for being here, Ruth. And I see some of your board members. Thank you all.
Counsel Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel Maury took mine's, but I'd also like to recognize Norm Pace, President of FINA. If you still would stand, please.
Very good. The next item on our agenda is official communications. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City County Council and Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District councils will be held in the City County Building in the council chambers on Monday, February 28th, 2019, I'm sorry, February 25th, 2019, at 7:00 PM. The purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may properly come before the regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Bob Osley, President, City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the state of Indiana, I caused to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and in the Indianapolis Star on Monday, February 11th, 2019, a copy of a public, of a notice of public hearing on proposal number eighty-eight, 2019. Said hearing to be held on Monday, February 25th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Public Assembly Room of the City County Building. Respectfully, Sarita Hughes, Clerk of the City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved with my signature and delivered this day to the Clerk of the City County Council, Sarita Hughes, the following ordinances: fiscal ordinances number one through four, general resolutions four and five, special resolutions one and two, Joseph H. Hoxette, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda. Do I have consent?
Consent.
And the next item on our agenda is approval of journals for January the 28th, 2019. Do I have consent?
Consent.
We'll now proceed to presentation of petitions, memorials, special resolutions, and council resolutions. The first item on our agenda is proposal number 136, introduced by all counselors, names the old Indianapolis Fire Department, Fire Station 31, and current Indianapolis Black Firefighters Association headquarters after past Black Firefighters Association President, retired Indianapolis Fire Department Division Chief, and current City County Counselor Monroe Gray, Jr.
It is an honor to give this resolution, the special resolution, on behalf of the Indianapolis City County Council to one of my mentors and friends who opened arms when I got on the council, who has just been good for me and good for our city and good for our council. I want to start by saying, City County Council Special Resolution Number Three, 2019, a special resolution naming old Indianapolis Fire Department, IFD, Fire Station 31, and current Indianapolis Black Firefighters Association, BFA, headquarters after past BFA President, retired IFD Division Chief, and current City County Counselor, Monroe Gray, Jr. Whereas Monroe Gray, Jr. was appointed to the Indianapolis Fire Department on October 11th, 1972, I wasn't born yet, he worked diligently and rose through the ranks, promoted the first lieutenant, and then to captain, until finally retired as community liaison division chief on December 21st, 2007. And whereas a civil servant at heart, Monroe ran the position of the City County Councilman and was first elected on the local legislative body in 1992, continuing to serve after 26 years, and currently the representative for Council District Eight. And...
Whereas his leadership skills and experience led to elections by his peers as City County Council President in 2006, and again in 2007, and served as Majority Leader from 2014 to 2018. And whereas the Indianapolis Black Firefighters Association was established in 1992 by African-American members of the Indianapolis Fire Department to promote justice and equality, serve and protect our communities, and foster growth in our youth through positive action, and promote justice and equality. Whereas Monroe Gray served as the first president of the Black Firefighters Association, and...
Whereas the Black Firefighters is now the headquarters of the old IFD Fire Station 31 located at 1201 East 46th Street, and will be the formerly named after the past B. Black Firefighter Association President and retired IFD Division Chief Monroe Gray, Jr. At a celebration on March the 2nd, now therefore be resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis, so in Marion County, Indiana. Section One, that the Indiana City County Council recognized one of the longest-serving member, past council president, past BFA President, and retired IFD Division Chief Monroe Gray, Jr., and congratulate him on naming the old IFD Fire Station 31 and current BFA headquarters in his honor. Section Two, the council extend its gratitude to Mr. Gray for continuous service and commitment to make Indianapolis a better and a safe place to live for all his residents. Section Three, the mayor is inviting to join in this resolution and has affixed his signature to heretofu. The resolution shall be in full force and effective upon adoption, compliance to IC 36-3-4-14. This special resolution was sponsored by Counselors Simpson, Oliver, and Jackson, and was passed by the City County Council on the 25th day of February, 2019. I so move, Mr. President.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor? Back to the speaker.
Thank you, sir. We're going to call up first the Black Firefighter Association President, and then we're going to have the chief to come up and speak on behalf of Monroe Gray.
Thank you, counsel, for having us. I'm Corey Floyd, President of Black Firefighters Association. We're just standing in awe of what he has done for us, what he has done for our careers. Listening to that proclamation where he started in '72, I wasn't even thought of. Wasn't born until '81. But it's because of, it's his shoulders that we stand on. And he blazed a trail for us and pioneered this career for us, and we just want to honor him as being the first president of Black Firefighters Association that has helped bring others that look like us and equality and justice on our job, so.
Thank you all for having us here. I'm Lieutenant Tracy Graham. I'm the Vice President of the Indianapolis Black Firefighters Association, and I was two. So, I just appreciate, and we like to honor you while you're still here with us, to show you how much we appreciate you paving the way and making it not only equality and equal for men of color, but also women of color. Thank you.
Well, good evening. I'll be short. I think I was born then. I was a little bit older than two. But when I think about Chief Gray, there's a couple of things that come to mind. One is his ability to work in either out in front of an issue or behind the scenes. If you went to Monroe and told him you had an issue, he'd sit down and talk to you about it. But he was equally adept at saying, "I'm going to lead the charge. I'm going to sponsor it, whatever the case may be." Or he was willing to work behind the scenes and have the conversations that needed to be had. The second part I've mentioned before is it was a dual sword if Monroe took a liking to you. If he started paying attention to you, that could be very good for you, but it could also be a problem for you if you weren't doing the things you were supposed to do, because he certainly would correct you and let you know that. But I think I speak for everyone here that I am certainly better for knowing and working with Chief and Counselor Monroe Gray. So we thank you very much, sir.
It's very fitting that Black History Month, it's not a lot of people get a building name after their Monroe. I mean, you're very fortunate. Very few, very few people you really think about that could have the building. This building is in Duke's District. It's around the corner from me, and I would just like to say to Monroe, "Congratulations, my brother, and you can come on up here and give this great speech you want to give."
I'd just like to say thank you to all the firefighters. And the Black Firefighters Association arrived at the, and just in time when the IFD was going through some great changes, and we was able to work together to make IFD a better place for everyone. I mean, it was the time when we hired our first woman, who was Afro-American. It was a time that we was doing some changes as to trying to make the footprint for IFD, a bigger footprint throughout the whole community, not just the Afro-American community, but everywhere. So, we did some great things, and I accept this award, not just on behalf of Monroe Gray, but for all the people that helped me to do the things that we had to do to make this organization a better organization, and at the same time make IFD a better IFD and the city of Indianapolis a better city, so that we can serve all the people all the time. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 137, introduced by all counselors, which recognizes Indiana University, Purdue University of Indianapolis, 50th anniversary.
Want to join me here? Fellow counselors, I have the honor of introducing special resolution number 137 this evening on the occasion of IUPUI's 50th anniversary. I am sponsoring this resolution with President Osley, as he and I share the IUPUI campus as its, their representatives on the council. I have the western two-thirds, the better half of campus, and VOP represents the front third. And with us tonight is the chancellor and leader of IUPUI. This is Dr. Nasser Pedar, who is a friend of mine. He's come up through the IU system. He started back at IUPUI Columbus, served as chancellor at IU East in Richmond, made his way through the system. He's a product of an IU education, and delighted that he can be with us this evening as we recognize and honor IUPUI on its 50th anniversary. And so I have a resolution that I'd like to introduce tonight. It's something of a short infomercial on all the good work that IUPUI does, and then I'll ask Dr. Pedar just to offer us his greetings. Whereas the IUPUI campus has a tremendous impact on our local economy, including over 8,000 faculty and staff here in Indianapolis, with an annual payroll of over $830 million, and over $300 million spent locally in our Indianapolis economy. And whereas IUPUI has graduated more than 200,000 students, more than 60% of whom now make their homes in Indianapolis, who are now engaged in careers in health, in the life sciences, social work, technology, teaching, engineering, law, public policy, business, the arts, and more. And whereas IUPUI is home to our nation's second-largest medical school, and America, and I believe the world's largest nursing school, and Indiana's only dental school, all of which educate the healthcare workforce and advanced research and discovery on treatments and cures in Indiana and abroad. Whereas IUPUI has attracted nearly $8 billion, with a B, in research funding in support of advancement to the pressing challenges facing Indianapolis, our state, the world, and beyond. And whereas IUPUI has been a strong partner in Indianapolis' ability to attract sporting events at the IU Auditorium and the Carroll Track and Field Stadium. And whereas IUPUI provides access to vast resources of data and expertise such as Savvy, the Indiana Business Resource Council, IU's Public Policy Institute, all of which are used locally and by state and federal government, business, and not-for-profit sources. And whereas IUPUI is working to preserve Indianapolis' heritage through initiatives to digitize the archives of the Indianapolis Recorder, the Benjamin Harrison Presidential Site, and the Indianapolis Motor Speedway, as well as a partnership to preserve, and this is a very current effort, the heritage of the Madgeum CJ Walker Theater and the Walker Legacy Center. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Indianapolis City County Council. Section One, the Indianapolis City County Council proudly congratulates IUPUI on its 50th anniversary. Section Two, the council recognizes the university's many contributions to the campus, which it makes to our city. Section Three, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution, and I'm confident he will, by affixing his signature heretofu. And finally, Section Four, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with Indiana code. Mr. President, I so move.
It's improperly moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Back to the speaker.
In more than 50 years ago, then-Meir Luger offered that one couldn't have a great city without a great university, and that was the seed with which IUPUI took hold in this city. Not in one place, not where it is today, but it was, it was a scattering of classrooms and adult education centers in and around Marion County that has coalesced, taken hold, and is really growing just west of here. And if you've, if you've been by there lately, in the way that the city has worked with IUPUI to really dress up West Street and take all the utilities and bring those underground and landscape, it's just such an appropriate front door for the university that shares this community with us. If I could invite Dr. Pedar, just to offer his greetings, and we offer him our congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel. We really appreciate this. President Osley, thank you so much, and thank you also for serving on IUPUI Board of Advisors. I also want to take the opportunity to thank the council and many members who have been a long supporter of IUPUI. Number of items that we are very proud of about our campus was just mentioned by Counselors, so I will not repeat, that we have over 30,000 students, 8,000 graduating every year from our campus, and that 30%, roughly 30% of our students are students of color. And that is proud of, because that is the highest among any university in the state of Indiana. We are very proud of that. We are partners with the city in economic development in many ways, in addition to a number of graduates, the number of individuals that live in this community. And if, at any time, we can provide any kind of a support, any information for informed decision, please let us know. We'll be delighted to do that. And I'm here with a couple of our staff and a number of our students there. So on behalf of 30,000 students and over 8,000 faculty staff, I want to thank you very much. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 138, which recognizes and honors
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this is what we are here for this evening. If you didn't know it, you're going to hear it in a moment, who we about to hear this resolution that this council would consider passing. It's no longer a secret, a little-known secret, that who this gentleman is, who he was, and who he has become, Mr. Reginald Jones. We do not wait till February to tell anyone about American history. We do it all year round. And sometime, one or two of us fall through the cracks, and we're not known and heard of. But this evening, within our viewing audience, word of mouth, you're going to learn a little bit about Indianapolis Reginald Jones. Mr. President, a special resolution on the legacy of Reginald L. Jones, Sr. Mr. President, a special resolution on the legacy of Reginald L. Jones, Sr. Now, who is Reginald Jones, Sr.? Reginald Jones attended Christmas Addict High School from 1956 to 1960 graduating class. 20 years after the president's mother graduated from Addicts in 1940. So on her shoulders you stand. Having heard that, whereas he was a member of the orchestra playing the trumpet and French horn, named vice president of the Letterman's Club and try high wide. And in his senior year of high school, he served as captain of the varsity football team. And whereas, Mr. President, in 1960, Reggie became the first American of African descent lifeguard to integrate swimming pools. He also became the head lifeguard at Broad Ripple and coached basketball at Municipal Gardens. He then initiated the first Negro History Week at Douglas Park. And whereas, under the offices of former Mayor Richard J. Luger, Reggie served on the unemployment committee. Afterwards, he began employment at the Indianapolis Skill Center, where he became the first African-American director in the Midwest to train unemployed and underemployed people ranging in age from 16 to 65. And whereas, Reggie had received many awards. The Ford Foundation Unsun Hero Award, Lucius Newsome Community Legacy Award, the 2015 Mayor's Business Advocate Award through media and community service under former Mayor Greg Baller, and received a community award from Dr. Eugene White. He has also served on the following boards: the Community Action Against Poverty, Citizen Ambulatory Health Center, and the Executive Director of OIC Opportunities Industrial Centers. And whereas, Reggie L. Jones is a man of many talents and is always going above and beyond to work and serve his community. Now therefore, Mr. President and members of the council, be resolved by the City County Council, City of Indianapolis, and Marion County, Indiana. The Indianapolis City County Council recognizes Reggie Jones for his legacy. The city council recognized the hard work, dedication, achievement of Reginald Jones. Section three, the mayor is invited to join this resolution by affixing his signature here too. Section four, this resolution should be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-3-4-14. This special resolution was sponsored by myself. Mr. President, I so move for its adoption.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion's passed. Back to the speaker.
We were here from members of his direct family, and then we're here from Mr. Jones. So, thank you.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Jabari Jones, Reginald Jones's son. Just like to thank you guys for recognizing my dad and our family. That's about it.
Thank you. On behalf of the Jones family, we thank you for this honor because he is a great man and he's done a lot for the community in Indianapolis. We thank you.
How you doing? I would like to thank you all for acknowledging the hard work and the love that my father has for the community. Thank you.
Now before we hear from Mr. Jones, I want to add a little tidbit here on where he and I crossed paths. He has heard these remarks earlier, about a year ago, then five years prior to that. I believe it was 1959 or 1960, thereabouts. I went to swimming. You were the lifeguard at Douglas Park Swimming Pool.
I was.
And I'm from the north side, you're from the east side.
Yes, sir.
So there's no mixing there. So, but anyway, at that time, we would come and we would store our clothes in the lockers. When I come out of the pool, I seen a guy on the east side with my shirt on. Standing like this. I couldn't say anything because I was on the wrong side of town. So I asked Reggie, when am I going to get my shirt back? Are you ready to tell me?
Yes, I am.
Okay, you got the call. Reggie Jones.
First of all, thank you for this recognition. I appreciate it. Growing up in Indianapolis hasn't always been easy, but growing up in Indianapolis, there are those who will speak up and do what has to be done, such as Monroe. I remember him from Short Ridge. I say that I'm fortunate that I have smelt my roses. Everybody don't get a chance to smell their roses. And when I say smell the roses, from what I considered, what I believed in, in terms of my city, what my mother always taught me, and she used to sing a song to me every night. If I can help someone along the way, then my living will not be in vain. So the five decades that I have been involved in my community, I feel proud about my achievements. Now to Duke, he said that he put his clothes in a locker. No, he didn't. Because if you put them in a locker, you get a tag and they put your clothes behind the, the counter. Duke goes in and changed clothes and leave his clothes there. And as I explained to Duke, I'm a lifeguard, not a clothes guard. So I'm not responsible for his clothes. Thank you. Thank you.
We need to stand up there and get a picture. Come on, come on. We need to get a photo. Come on. Picture, please.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
With the members of Alpha Kappa Alpha, please join us up front.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 139.
Give us a couple minutes. We're waiting for the Diamond Member to make her way up front, who is also our president's mother. So the president has to be on his best behavior because his mother's in the room. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. It is my honor to present this special resolution to the members of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. A special resolution celebrating the 90th anniversary of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated Alpha Mu Omega Chapter. Whereas Alpha Mu Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, AKA, was chartered in Indianapolis on February 16, 200, no, 1929. Whereas the chapter consisted of 28 chapter members, including Mary A. Johnson, dean of Girls at Christmas Addict High School, serving as chapters, the chapter's first president. And whereas...
We do that to people.
Whereas throughout the years, AMO has been given leadership and robust support to various national programs, such as the Foreign Scholarship Fund, the Mississippi Health Project, Sickle Cell Anemia Project, the Cleveland Job Corps, the project to purchase the birthplace of Martin Luther King Jr.'s HBCUs, and the Education Achievement Foundation. And whereas in 1979, Ivy Endowment Incorporated was established to pledge and honor AMO's commitment to support education of young women in central Indiana. Programs such as the Debuton Coalition, Rose Cotillion. I was on it. The Debuton Cotillion, Rosebuds, Rose petals. Were developed to equip, encourage, and simulate young women to pursue higher education, academic excellence, personal development, and civic involvement. Education continued to, to be one of AMO's primary focuses. Alpha Mu Omega has also provided workshops, seminars, lectures, and forums as social and educational opportunities to, for the local community. And whereas...
And whereas under the leadership of SOAR, Dr. Nicole C. Wilson, Alpha Mu Omega is the proud home chapter of over 470 women, ranging from 22 to 94, who represent every facet of the Indianapolis community, such as educators, businesswomen, lawyers, doctors, theologians, and homemakers. And whereas after 90 years of service, Alpha Mu Omega continues to have a rich legacy of women making a difference throughout the Indianapolis community, as well, as well as internationally through Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Inc. Now therefore...
Section one, the Indianapolis City County Council proudly recognizes the 90th anniversary of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated Alpha Mu Omega Chapter. Section two, the council heartily thanks Alpha Mu Omega for its many years of service to the community and encourages its continued purpose of achievement. Section three, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his name thereto, which he has done. Section four, this, this resolution shall be in force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-3-4-14. Mr. Vice President, I so move.
Proposal number 139 having been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Chair recognizes the sponsors.
Thank you. It is my honor to bring forward the president, the basilisk of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, one of my closest friends on the face of this earth, Dr. Nicole Wilson.
Good evening to President Osley, Counselor Lewis, my dear friend who authored this proclamation, Counselor Leroy Robinson, my council representative, here, and to all the distinguished members of the Indianapolis City County Council. On behalf of the nearly 500 members of Alpha Mu Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, we thank the Indianapolis City County Council for celebrating our 90 years of service to the Indianapolis community. Alpha Mu Omega Chapter is the largest chapter in the central region of Alpha Kappa Alpha. We are also the second-largest professional women's organization in Indianapolis according to the IBJ Book of List. We are educators, legislators, judges, business, and civic community leaders. And we are brave and wise women like our sister Osley, who has been with us for more than 75 years. We are also leaders at the various, very highest stages and ways of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. And our chapter has had many members who have served at the international level and the regional level, including someone who is here with us this evening, our sister Nadine Bonds, who has been a former central regional director and international regional Please know that the women of Alpha Mu Omega are here to serve the citizens of Indianapolis. We thank you for this honor, and we stand with you in service for the next 90 years
Thank you, fellow councilors. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 35, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 35 reappoints Bryan Robinson to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeal Division One. Mr. Robinson appeared before the committee on Monday, February 11, 2019, to seek reappointment and answer questions. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 11 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 22 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 38, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to withdraw, proposal number 38. Strike. Sorry, I said...
Strike, sorry, I said. Usually I say strike, but I was informed to say withdraw, so I move to withdraw, proposal number 38. The individual is no longer interested in serving on this board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 43, refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 43 appoints J. Gregory Stab to the Woodruff Place Economic Improvement Board. He appeared before the committee on Monday, February 11, 2019, to seek appointment and answer questions. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 11 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 22 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 46, refer to Parks and Recreation Committee, Chairman Oliver.
Mr. President, proposal number 46, we voted March 16th. It moved unanimously to appoint Joseph Nguyen, to reappoint him to the Board of Parks and Recreation. I so move, Mr. President.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 22 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 50, refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I would like to take proposals number 50, 65, 66, 67, 69. And 69 together. Thank you. Proposal number 50, reappoints Barbara Howard to the Alcohol Beverage Board of Marion County. Proposal number 65, reappoints Kenneth Allen to the Board of Business and Neighborhood Services. Proposal number 66, reappoints Jason Dudich to the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department Co-operation Board of Directors. Proposal number 67, reappoint Nora Spitznossel, and I apologize for mispronouncing your last name, to the Indianapolis City Market Cooperation Board. All proposals passed out of committee with a due pass recommendation and a vote of 11 to 0. Mr. President, I so move. Open 69, sorry, 69. Reappoint Michael Solari to the City Market Board as well. All proposals passed out of committee by a vote of 11 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 22 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 72, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to take proposal number 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, and 85, please. Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 72 reappoints Sandra Bryant to the Marion County Community Corrections Advisory Board. Proposal number 73 reappoints Ronald Covington to the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department Mayorat Board. Proposal number 74 reappoints Nancy Swisnawski to the Rubin Engagement Center Board. Proposal number 75 reappoints Bill Morrow to the Rubin Engagement Center Board. Proposal number 76 reappoints Lania Redman-Williams to the Rubin Engagement Center Board. Proposal number 77 reappoints Johnny Underwood to the Rubin Engagement Center Board. Proposal number 79 reappoints Mark Webster to the Board of Public Health and Safety. Proposal number 80 reappoints Tracy McQueen to the Domestic Balance Fatality Review Team. Proposal number 81 reappoints Mary Alice Navarro to the Domestic Balance Fatality Review Team. Proposal number 82 reappoints Kimberly Mattingly to the Domestic Balance Fatality Review Team. Proposal number 83 reappoints Elizabeth Filippo to the Domestic Balance Fatality Review Team. And proposal number 85 reappoints Sherri Kiggins to the Domestic Balance Fatality Review Team. Mr. President, these reappointments and appointments all passed out of committee 9 to 0. I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 22 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 87, refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 87 appoints Sherri Cybert to the Indianapolis Housing Agency Board of Directors. Ms. Cybert appeared before the committee on Monday, February 11, 2019, to seek reappointment and answer questions. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 11 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 22 to 0. The next item on our agenda is introduction of proposals. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposals number, proposal numbers 101 through 107 refer to the Administration and Finance Committee. Proposal number 101, introduced by Counselor McQuillan, appoints Danielle Coulter to the City County Audit Committee. Proposal number 102, introduced by Counselor Simpson, reappoints Lakeisha Jackson to the City County Audit Committee. Proposal number 103, introduced by Counselor Simpson, approves the mayor's appointment of Thomas Cook as the chief deputy mayor. Proposal number 104, introduced by Counselor Simpson, approves the mayor's appointment of Jeff Bennett as the deputy mayor of community development. Proposal number 105, introduced by Counselor Lewis, approves the mayor's appointment of Angela Smith Jones as the deputy mayor of, for economic development. Proposal number 106, introduced by Counselor Simpson, approves the mayor's appointment of Reverend David Hampton as the deputy mayor for neighborhood engagement. Proposal number 107, introduced by Counselor Simpson, approves the mayor's appointment of Hope Triple as the director of the Office of Audit and Performance. Proposal numbers 108 through 117 refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Proposal number 108, introduced by Counselor Lewis, reappoints Alpha Blackburn as, to the Metropolitan Development Commission. Proposal number 109, introduced by Counselor Lewis, reappoints Lena Hackett to the Metropolitan Development Commission. Proposal number 110, introduced by Counselor Lewis, reappoints William Semm to the Metropolitan Development Commission. Proposal number 111, introduced by Counselor Lewis, reappoints Brian Barton to the Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals. Proposal number 112, introduced by Counselor Lewis, reappoints Kathy Good to the Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals. Proposal number 113, introduced by Counselor Lewis, approves the mayor's appointment of Emily Mack as the director of the Department of Metropolitan Development. Proposal number 114, introduced by Counselor Simpson, approves the mayor's appointment of Brian Madison as the director of the Department of Business and Neighborhood Services. Proposal number 115, introduced by Counselor Robinson, approves the statement of benefits of Accurate Manufactured Products Group, Inc., AMPG, an applicant for tax abatement for property located in an economic revitalization area. Proposal number 116, introduced by Counselors Lewis and Sharif, approves the statement of benefits of Eli Lilly and Company, an applicant for tax abatement for real and personal property located in an economic revitalization area. Proposal number 117, introduced by Counselors Simpson and Gray, amends Chapter 611, Article 2 of the Code Regarding Empowerment and Removal of Vehicles. Proposals number, proposal numbers 118 through 128 refer to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee and were introduced by Counselor Robinson. Proposal number 118 reappoints Chris Duzenberry to the Early Intervention Planning Council. Proposal number 119 reappoints Blake Johnson to the Early Intervention Planning Council. Proposal number 120 reappoints Marilyn Feaster to the Early Intervention Planning Council. Proposal number 121 reappoints Mike O'Brien to the Early Intervention Planning Council. Proposal number 122, reappoint Shane Foley to the Citizens Police Complaint Board. Proposal number 123 reappoints Duane Egram to the Citizens Police Complaint Board. Proposal number 124 reappoints Logan Harrison to the Metropolitan, I mean, to the Marion County Public Defender Board. Proposal number 125 approves the mayor's appointment of Paul Babcock as the director of the Office of Public Health and Safety. Proposal number 120 approves the mayor's appointment of Ernest V. Malone as the chief of the Indianapolis Fire Department. Proposal number 127 approves the mayor's appointment of Brian Roach as the chief of police for the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department. Proposal number 128, introduced by Counselors Robinson and Feaster, approves a master lease purchase agreement to obtain fire apparatus and other related matters. Proposal number 129, introduced by Counselor Oliver, refer to Parks and Recreation Committee, approves the mayor's appointment of Linda Brafford as the director of the Department of Parks and Recreation. Proposals number 130 through 134 refer to the Public Works Committee. Proposal number 130, introduced by Counselor Adamson, approves the mayor's appointment of Dan Parker as the director of the Department of Public Works. Proposal number 131, introduced by Counselor Adamson, authorizes parking restrictions on 17th Street near the Monont Trail in District 17. Proposal number 132, introduced by Counselor Holliday, authorizes intersection controls at Christie Court and Murray Street in District 20. Proposal number 133, introduced by Counselor Skiles, authorizes speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour and weight limit restrictions in the Devonshire subdivision in District 3. Proposal number 134, introduced by Counselor Adamson, authorizes intersection controls at College Avenue and 9th Street and parking restrictions on College and Bell Fountain Avenues in District 17. Proposal number 135, introduced by Counselor Osalee, refer to the Rules and Public Policy Committee, amends Chapter 151, Articles 5 and 6 of the Code Regarding Council Staff. Proposal number 140, introduced by Counselor Robinson, refer to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, approves additional appropriations totaling $9,675,000 in the 2019 city non-departmental budget, Community Justice Campus Sub-Fund of the Consolidated County General Fund, to be used at the closing of the Community Justice Campus bound to fund, bond to fund the debt stabilization account in an amount equal to one quarter of the total annual debt service. Mr. President, this concludes the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders, Priority Business. Proposal number 141 is a rezoning ordinance certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission on January 8, 2019. If no counselor wishes to call down the proposal, for reconsideration, the proposal will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down the proposal for reconsideration? Seeing none, the proposal will pass into law. Proposal numbers 142 through 147 are all rezoning ordinances certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission on January 8, 2019. If no counselor wishes to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration, the proposals will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration? Seeing none, the proposals will pass into law. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders, Public Hearing. Proposal number 88, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 88, 2019, approves an additional appropriation of $300,000 in 2019 budget of the Office of Public Health and Safety, the Consolidated County Fund, to contract with service providers to hire homeless neighbors to assist in cleaning, beautification, and litter abatement, support entities providing wraparound support services, supplement housing needs, and other necessities of homeless individuals and support programs. Director Paul Babcock of the Office of Public Health and Safety stated that this proposal is to be used in a twofold manner for permanent supportive housing and employment. Mr. Babcock said if there is, if there is any residual funding depending on the contracts and funds distributed, it will go towards CHIP, Street Reach Indy program. Mr. Babcock said that the first half of the funds will go towards services, including rental assistance vouchers, that will be used to help house individuals within the Housing Recovery Fund. Mr. Babcock said that the second half of the funds will go towards a pilot project to work with Horizon House to launch a workforce development and employment program, some to those in Seattle, Portland, Denver, Austin, Dallas, and Albuquerque. To help homeless neighbors who are panhandling find a different type of employment, such as abatement, cleanup, beautification, to offer another type of economic incentives for individuals to get out of homelessness and find gainful employment. Jeff Bennett, Deputy Mayor of Community Development, officer of the mayor, stated that with regard to the funding for housing, they have, they have in hand 50 rental assistance vouchers so that they can reduce the population in shelters and those that are sleeping outside. They have a source to provide wraparound services for those 50 vouchers. Deputy Mayor Bennett also said that with regard to the workforce development, Horizon House has been a great sounding board, and it seemed that they would have, be a good administrator of the program among their other array of services. Counselor Simpson moves, seconded by Counselor Muscary. Simple proposal number 88 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. Motion carried by vote of 9 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Counselor Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just curious if someone could answer. This is the 300,000 that we moved from the parking meter fund, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions from counselors? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to proposal number 88? Very good. Anyone who wishes to speak, you'll have two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, counselors. My name is Scott Armstrong. I'm the Executive Director of Partners in Housing. We're the largest provider of permanent supportive housing in the city of Indianapolis. I also happen to be the Chair of the Blueprint Council in homelessness, and I just wanted to come and, and say that as a provider that works in this arena every day, we fully support this, this measure and hope that you vote yea. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kay Wiles. I'm the Director of the Health Net Homeless Initiative Program. As a service provider in this community for over 15 years, working with this population, I also support this funding in order to get these programs up and running. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Teresa Westle, Executive Director of Horizon House, and we too have been in the community for over 30 years, serving this population, and we too support this bill. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Leslie Kelly. I've been the Director of Programs at Horizon House for the past 11 years. In that role, I certainly support this funding and believe that funding like this is vital to providers in the city of Indianapolis so that we can ensure that our neighbors are housed and remain housed. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chelsea Haring Cozy. I'm the Executive Director of the Coalition for Homelessness Intervention and Prevention, or CHIP Indy, and we're supportive of this proposal and welcome the opportunity for funding to help move our five-year community plan to end homelessness forward. Thank you.
Hi there. My name's Tom Tuttle, and I'm the Street Reach Indy Manager with CHIP, and I just want to also say that as a community, we are in support, and I am supportive of this proposal to help end homelessness here in the community. Thank you.
Seeing no one else in the audience, Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to acknowledge our Deputy Mayor Jeff Bennett and Director Paul Babcock for their efforts on this initiative, and they'll be coming back to the Public Safety Committee to give us updates in the coming months about this project, so they love coming to my committee, so they'll be back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman. Are there any additional comments? Are there any additional comments from councillors? Proposal 88. All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 21 to zero. There is no business under Special Orders, unfinished business, so we will now proceed to Special Orders' final adoption. And the next item on the agenda is Proposal Number Three, refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I would like to take Proposal Three, Four, and 52 together. Well, or at least present them together. I guess we can do separate votes if that's okay.
Please.
Thank you. Proposal Number Three approves an amendment to the Declatory Resolution and Redevelopment Plan for the Near East Side Redevelopment Area, establishing the PR Mallory North Allocation Area. Proposal Number Four approves amendment to the Declatory Resolution and Redevelopment Plan to the Near East Side Redevelopment Area, establishing the PR Mallory South Allocation Area. Deputy Mayor Jeff Bennett and James Taylor, Chief Executive Officer of the John Bonner Neighborhood Center, gave a brief presentation regarding the development. Mr. Bennett stated that Proposal Three and Four, 2019, enables Proposal Number 52 to happen as they provide the backstop in the form of a tax increment financing, TIF allocation area. He stated that there are two separate proposals, as technically they are two separate redevelopment areas. After much discussion, the proposals passed out of committee by a vote of 10 to zero, with one councillor abstaining, councillor Holliday. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councillors? Councillor Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. President. In light of my need to abstain from these resolutions, Three, Four, and Fifty-two, rather, I abstained in committee and think I need to abstain tonight as well.
Thank you, sir. Additional comments from councillors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 20 yays, one abstention. The motion carries 20 yays and one abstention. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 52, refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. The motion carries 20 yays and one abstention. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number Seven, refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number Seven amends Chapter 744, Article Nine of the Revised Code of the Consolidated City and County, to provide a comprehensive update and additional provisions to the signed ordinance development area. Emily Mack, Director, DMD, and Shannon Norman, Principal Planner, Code Revision, DMD, gave a brief presentation. They discussed the last comprehensive signed ordinance revision took place in 1988. Indy Rezone adopted a new revisions in 2015, but it did not include the signed code, and there was, they reminded us that there was some legal issues in 2015, 2016, G E F T Outdoor LLC versus the City of Indianapolis. John Baker also was available to give a brief presentation. He is attorney and expert on sign and First Amendment. He spoke regarding the proposal. Councillor Adamson moved and seconded by councillor Holliday to amend the proposal, and that amendment passed by a vote of 11 to zero. After much public testimony, the committee voted to send the proposal to the full council with a due pass as amended recommendation by a vote of 11 to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have an amendment to offer, as a technical amendment. Most of you should have it on your desk already. I'd like to read that here. Mr. President, I move to amend Article Nine, Section Two, and Definitions in Sections One of Proposal Seven, 2019, specifically the definition of legally established non-conforming sign. On page six of the proposal, by deleting the language that is stricken through and adding the underlying language in the highlighted portion to read as follows. In Section Two, Definitions, it, okay, sorry, it is essentially removing the last sentence that says deleting "a sign that was erected in accordance with a variance granted prior to the adoption of this chapter and does not comply with this chapter, including a sign that was unlawfully erected shall be deemed to be an illegal sign." And I so move.
All right, the motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councillors? Councillor Feaster.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm curious to know why this would be deleted.
Yes, councillor Ken.
Mr. President, Director Mack is available to answer questions. I see her making her way to the front, with your permission.
Director Mack, would you come forward?
President Osley, and councillors, good evening. My name is Emily Mack, and I'm the Director of the Department of Metropolitan Development. I apologize, councillor Feaster, that was actually a technical error on DMD's part. We realized, as we were going through it, that we accidentally made an editing mistake and just left a portion of a sentence in there, so it's just a technical error that we are asking to be corrected.
So a sign that does not comply with the law is not considered an illegal sign?
Shannon Norman, who is with DMD's current planning section, she actually leads our ordinance revision section, and she has been intimately involved in drafting all of that language, and so she is probably the best person to actually answer that technical question.
Ms. Norman.
Thank you, President Osley, and councillors. Councillor Feaster, the way that the sentence was crafted to describe a legally established non-conforming sign was correct in the first sentence, but the second sentence negated the first just because there was a comma that was left in. So a sign that does not comply with the ordinance is an illegal sign, but the example given does not represent an illegal sign. So we're just taking that out to make sure that it's clear for users.
Thank you so much.
No problem. Thank you.
Councillor McCullough.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I don't know if this is a question for you again, councillor De Metro, or to whom this question would be best answered, but so let me ask you a situation. If a sign that was unlawfully erected but was subsequently granted a variance, would it be considered to be legally conforming?
Yes, councillor, that's correct. So if a sign was granted a variance, then it is legally established, non-conforming if it doesn't comply with the current code, so it would be allowed. If a sign was not in compliance with the current ordinance and never received a variance, then it may be subject to an enforcement action. So if it's in violation of another code, encroaching, or in the right-of-way, or is subsequently not in compliance with its variance grant, then it would be an illegal sign. But if it was granted a variance, it would be legally established.
May I follow up, Mr. President?
Please.
So it's a gray area and we don't really know?
Well, it would definitely depend on if the variance had conditions, but it would depend on the case. But in most cases, if a sign is legally established and non-conforming and was subject to a variance grant, then it would be lawful and not an illegal sign.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from councillors? Councillor Coats.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You and I have exchanged a handful of emails on this, so I just wanted to reiterate, the concerns I brought to you are about grandfathering. So this amendment, where does grandfathering fit into this?
Sure. Within the parlance of planning and zoning, grandfathering and legally established are often used interchangeably, and so a sign would be grandfathered if it was granted a variance, and if a sign was legally established, it would be grandfathered. So for instance, unless someone was performing more than maintenance, which as I believe is the vein in which we spoke, it would be grandfathered. But if it was more than maintenance, if the size of the sign, maybe the height, possibly the location, were being changed, then it would be subject to the revised ordinance. But that would again be vetted through the permitting process at BNS where a site plan would be required, and things of that nature. But for regular maintenance, which can include painting, or cleaning, or replacing the bulbs in a cabinet, something like that, those things would be included in the definition of maintenance.
Okay. Quick follow-up, Mr. President, if you don't mind. Doesn't look like he minds. So within the scope of maintenance, and slightly beyond that, if the location doesn't change, but if, what about new artwork for the sign? If the sign is not any bigger, no more additional square footage for the face of the sign, would that fall within grandfathering?
It should, which could include changing the face panels, changing logos, maybe if a business name was changing and those elements were altered. But you're correct, if the size doesn't change, or if it's still in compliance, then it would still hold on to its grandfathered or legally established non-conforming status.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councillor Coulter.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a follow-up to councillor Coats's question, just now you said "it should," which is a little bit of concern to me because it kind of sounds like it's up to interpretation. So can you kind of expand upon that? I just want to make sure that we're not affecting anything here where it's kind of open to interpretation, what whoever decides on this permitting process and everything, if it's left open to what they may see as maintenance versus what they may not see as maintenance.
Thank you for your question. I think it's very important to look at hypotheticals in planning and zoning as being a little bit of a gray area in the sense where cases do matter, and what information is presented as part of the permitting process would dictate how the case is followed through. So that's why I say "should." I can think of, for instance, if a sign doesn't change in square footage but changes in shape, it may encroach into the right-of-way. So in that case, we would have an issue. But again, that falls under the purview of if it's in violation of another ordinance, not just the sign code, then we have to refer to all of those. But in general, business owners, I don't believe the goal here is to penalize anyone, but simply to make sure that regular maintenance, like painting, cleaning, the changing of electrical components, it isn't confused with the actual changing of the mass, or of the size, or of the location of a sign. Definitely part of this process, and this is important as many councillors have asked, we will go through an extensive training with BNS staff as well as the current planning staff to make sure that those areas where discretion can be applied are understood.
Any additional questions or comments from councillors on the proposed amendment? Seeing none, we will then proceed to the board for our vote for the amendment. The motion to amend, 21 to zero. Now back to proposal number seven. Additional comments from councillors on the amended proposal seven? All right, seeing none, then we'll proceed to the board for our vote.
I need to abstain from this vote, and I hit yes by accident. Is this one? I'm confused. Never mind, yes, I'm confused. All right, I'm okay with it.
All right, the motion. Are you abstaining or are you voting?
I'm voting.
Okay, very good. The motion carries 21 to zero. The next item on our agenda?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Councillor Evans.
Thank you, sir. Excuse me, Mr. President, I was calling you Mr. Chairman. I did want to just say a quick comment for Ms. Shannon. She did an excellent job working with the councillors, her knowledge on this issue. Shannon, I'm speaking to you, if you heard me there. She did just, I cannot speak highly enough about the job that she did. I know not everything was in this ordinance that you wanted. You worked extremely hard, you did a good job communicating with the council, and I think, I speak for most of us when I say that we're very appreciative of that, so thank you for your effort and your work on this.
All right, the next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 51. Refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number 51 approves the amounts, locations, and operation of certain projects to be funded by the Community Development Grant Funds. Jennifer Foltz, Community Investment Division Administrator, and Beth Novell, Manager of Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG, Department of the Metropolitan Development, gave a brief presentation. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 10 to zero, with councillor Jackson abstaining. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councillors? Councillor Jackson.
Mr. President, this is the proposal I need to abstain from.
Okay.
Thank you. You need any reason why, or? I'm good, okay.
That's all right. Are there any additional comments from councillors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 20 yays and one abstention. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 53. Refer to Public Works Committee, chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to take these one at a time and very slowly. Just kidding, just kidding. With consent, I'd like to take the last eight proposals of the evening together. Thank you. Proposal Number 53 authorizes intersection controls at Hampton Drive and Private Drive in District Seven. Private Drive is just a name for a drive that we don't know. Proposal Number 54 authorizes parking restrictions on Georgia Street between Concordia Street and College Avenue in District Sixteen. Proposal Number 55 authorizes intersection controls at River Road and River Crossing Parkway in District Three. Proposal Number 56 authorizes intersection controls
Proposal number fifty-six authorizes intersection controls throughout the Wyndham Lake subdivision in District six. Proposal number fifty-seven authorizes a speed limit reduction to forty miles per hour along portions of German Church Road and Sunnyside Road in Districts five, fourteen, and nineteen. Proposal number fifty-eight authorizes intersection controls at Bethel Avenue and Zwingly Street in District twenty-one. Proposal number fifty-nine authorizes weight limit restrictions along West Washington and West Moore Streets in District twenty-two. Proposal number sixty authorizes speed limit, weight, and limit reductions in the Devonshire subdivision in District three. All these proposals pass with a vote of eight to zero, and I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councillors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the Board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-one to zero. There is no business under special service district councils. There is no business under new business. So the next item on our agenda is announcements and adjournment. Councillor Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President, for the opportunity. Two things, I'm hosting a town hall meeting on the Far East Side at 501 North Post Road tomorrow, six o'clock. We're going to talk about infrastructure, trash, and neighborhood crime, and as for Warren and Lawrence Townships. Anybody's welcome, special view boarding those areas, you'll get to hear some good information. And then COSCA is looking for child advocates, and basically there's someone who advocates through the court on behalf of the child. So if you're interested, I have information, or I'll give it to the council clerk, and you can contact her. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councillor Jackson, did you mention the location for the event tomorrow?
501 North Post Road. It is the Warren Township Government Center trustee Vernon A. Brown. It's at Tenth and Post Road.
Very good, thank you. Seeing no other comments, the docketed agenda for this meeting of council having been completed, the Chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President.
The Chair recognizes councillor McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been asked to offer the following motions for adjournment. By all councillors in memory of Catherine L. Leach. By councillor Cordy in memory of Virginia Rose Worley. By councillor Lewis in memory of Jason Eugene Andrews and Jack A. Mason. By councillor Lewis in memory of Mark H. Davis. By councillor Fanning in memory of Lilian Potts. By councillor McQuillan in memory of Joseph G. Brown, Gary T. Del Ray, Alice Holliday O'Neill-Dye, James E. Breedensteiner, and Richard Dick Sheets. By councillor Feaster in memory of Richard Finch, Pamela Stratton-Holmes, Joseph Bender, and Harold Schmidt. By councillor Westler in memory of Richard C. Dick Schumot and William J. Bill Roberts. By councillor Mascary in memory of Tom Lewis and Candace Som Watkins. By councillors McInerney and Feaster in memory of Helen Hartsock. By councillor Holliday in memory of Wanda Bryce. By councillor Adamson in memory of Timothy Gardner. Mr. President, I'd like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City County Council in recognition of and respect for the life and contributions of those persons I have here specifically named. I respectfully ask the support of fellow councillors. I further request that the motion be made a part of the permanent record of this body, and that a letter bearing the council seal and the signature of this president be sent to the family of each person advising of this action.
Thank you, councillor McQuillan. Hearing no objections, the motion is received, and the request is so ordered. Hearing no further motions, we're adjourned.